Good evening, everybody.
Is it right?
Welcome to the September Planning Board meeting for the Town of Kent. Could we please all stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
I'm sorry.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's go in this.
Go ahead now.
Yes. Okay. I believe Morrow Equipment is first up. As you just said that.
Good evening. Jamie LeJudas from Inside Engineering, serving in landscape architecture. Also here is Jennifer Gray from Keenan Bean, representing the project, and Mr. Ron Yakin from Morrow Equipment. So we'd like to start with, we've provided some additional information based on the comment memos we received the last meeting. We've included some layouts as far as just some conceptual views of where components would be on the site. We've provided lighting, which we know we are proposing a 35-foot light pole, which would also require another variance. We are looking into lowering that and seeing if that's a viable option, but that may be something that we need to get a variance for. We've provided vehicle maneuvering on the site as well, showing the tractor trailers coming in and around the buildings. And basically just provided some of the additional information that you guys were looking for as far as the SEACR review was concerned. I know there were some comment memos that we just received. I haven't had a chance to review them. I haven't had a chance to review them as we just got them seconds ago, but we are moving forward.
Okay.
Jen, do you want to talk?
For the record, my name is John Andrews. I serve as engineer to the planning board. To echo what Jamie said, we did issue a memo. As you recall, we did discuss it during the workshop session, and basically what we did is we took our prior memo and updated it. Certain things they did do. Item number one, I think you were all in receipt of a memo issued by the building inspector regarding the various open issues that deal with use and the height. The memo addressed to our satisfaction the matter of use of the site. We take no exception to his determination. So that item on my prior memo has been resolved. Jamie did respond. We also got a response from New York City DEP and New York State DOT. Not all of their responses were fully responsive to our comments, but I think there's a couple, there's a couple big ones that we talked about during the workshop that I'd just like to review with you. For instance, item number six deals with Route 52. They did give us a traffic analysis. The traffic analysis was fine as far as it went, but the whole point here, this is a crane storage, maintenance, and delivery facility, so to speak, a crane warehouse, if you will, as they call it. And I'll use their words, that's not an endorsement of their use, but anyway. But one of the things that was missing from their traffic analysis is the key times are when they're going out to deliver a crane or when a crane is being returned to their shop. We're not looking for a lot of fancy information, but we would like to know the details: number of days, number of vehicles, what it looks like. And I know that's probably highly dependent on where the crane comes from and what it was, but we do need some additional information there. DEP issued some things with stormwater. We have some concerns with stormwater. If you all recall, they did create some wonderful stormwater treatment ponds out there. They've kind of dealt with the issue of sizing. Those ponds don't need any work to accommodate their proposal, but those ponds do need to be properly configured for inlet and make sure everything from their site is properly analyzed going into the ponds. They did provide us a landscaping plan, and the way this site lays out, as you all know, it's kind of interesting. The only side that the public sees is really the Route 52 side, but I think as you're going forward and when you look at the visual analysis, you may look at some landscaping and other areas. You may want to kind of soften some views around the site, but that remains to be seen. As Jamie said, they did give us a lighting plan. Their perimeter lighting is identified at 35 feet. The town code is 20. They did provide a conceptual storage plan. In other words, how they're going to lay out the storage in the back. The one question I have, and I think it's important, that that conceptual plan needs to be worked through with the fire district, because I don't know what the emergency response criteria may be. Obviously, a metal scaffold crane is not going to be subject to fire, one would think, but if somebody's working out there and a pile shifts and somebody gets trapped there or there's a need for emergency response, I think that needs to be worked through. Mr. Walters did start taking a look at it, so they may need to deal with him. And then the two other, there's two other big issues in my mind. The first is, deals with the wash and paint operation. There's insufficient details, and they do have a rather large paint booth, obviously to accommodate what they're putting through it, but we need to, there are specific air regulations and air provisions that stem from that, so we need a fairly detailed analysis of what other permits they may require, how they're going to do this, what their usage is. It may be relatively minor. We don't know. The information just doesn't exist. We talked about the visibility. Bruce is going to follow up on that, and I think there's a lot of little tweaks, as we talked about. There's little details on site plans that are going to have to be resolved near the end: where silt fence goes, where we're going to put a concrete wash. That's all kind of stuff that kind of flows after this, and what I tried to do here is hit the highlights and identify those areas that I think we need more information. And basically, where they didn't provide us, they did say, "We'll give it to you in a future submission," so from my standpoint, we're waiting for that future submission, and once we get that, maybe we'll be able to address some of these issues in more detail. And then I'll leave it to Mr. Barber, because he's got more work.
My name is Bruce Barber. I'm the Town's Environmental Planning Consultant. John hit on a lot of the highlights that we were reviewing with the applicant to try to get some additional information on some of the more substantive components of the proposed action. To echo John, you know, traffic seems to be something we need a little bit more information about. Certainly, the paint booth and the associated, if any, environmental concerns associated with groundwater, surface water, and air on that needs to be looked at, as did DEP when they called that out on their review with Cynthia Garcia. In addition, we have the visual component, which we're going to get to in just a few moments, and then there's the stormwater issues. So, you know, what we've done at the request of the planning board at the workshop is to take our prior memos and go through and highlight what still remains to be provided, and then giving that to the applicant, having them have an opportunity to address those in a future memo, hopefully so that we can get this back on the agenda for October and go through a process of a Part II AAF that'll be much more confined because we'll have more information. So that was the general goal of what we were doing. So I won't go over my memo basically in depth. It basically has a lot of the information that John had. One thing that I do want to mention that also comes up is just an operational noise that we need a little bit more information as well. There was a mining activity for a long time with an awful lot of noise going on out there, and that's certainly conceded. It's just that, you know, it will be less than that, for sure. It's just how much less, and will it be impacting the community even though it is less than the mining operation? We need to find that information out as well. So there's some additional, as I said, substantive items that we're going to hopefully hone in on, and that will then guide the Part II AAF that the planning board is your document for your consideration and for your adoption. So this evening, a couple of things to do. The first is, back in July, the planning board circulated an intent for lead agency, and that was sent to the involved and interested agencies for this proposed action. We did not hear any adverse comments back or objections from any of the involved agencies for this board to serve as lead agency. So the first action for the board to take, if you so choose this evening, is I prepare a draft resolution for your consideration dated today, September 12th. It is Draft 1, basically for the proposed board's declaration of lead agency, and you, if you wish, would be taking a motion and a second and a roll call vote.
Do you have a copy of that?
I'm sorry?
Here. This is the resolution. Do you not have it?
No, I didn't. No.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. Okay.
So what you're considering before you is adopting the resolution, which is listed as Draft 1, dated today, which is a declaration of lead agency, and you would need a motion second and a roll call vote, please.
Okay. So I want to make a motion to accept the resolution to declare lead agency for the site on New York Route 52, tax parcel number 12-13-46, Draft 1, which is dated today, which is 9/12/24. I'll make the motion. Any second?
I'll second it.
Hold on, Jamie.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just want to make one question. The tax map, the law is 44, not 46.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. As amended then, please.
Okay. As amended, tax parcel number 12-13-44. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. We need a roll call. So Rich?
Yay.
Kathy?
Yes.
Giancarlo?
Yes.
Myself is yes. Jean?
Yes.
Jackie? Here you go.
Okay, great. So the motion passes. You have declared lead agency. Second step is that there are time constraints and benchmarks in SEACR process. What you need, if you wish this evening, based upon John's and my memos, your review of the project, is that you may wish to consider the project at present incomplete, the application being incomplete, and that as such, you're not capable of making a determination of significance of the project at this time, and I would encourage you to do that.
So I'd make a motion to...
Indicate the application at present is incomplete and therefore prevents this board from making a determination of significance.
And that's just a simple motion second?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to state that the application is incomplete, and we are going to... Just that's it?
Application is incomplete, and you are, and as a result, you're not capable of making a determination of significance.
Okay. You want me to say exactly the same thing?
Ready? The application you find to be incomplete.
All right. The application is incomplete.
And as such, you are unable...
And as such, we are incapable of making...
Making a determination of significance.
Determination. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Who wants to...
I'll make the motion.
Who wants a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Last, before you is a draft resolution dated today, also as Draft 1. This is a resolution to authorize a visual assessment for Morrow Equipment, and we're going to change the tax law to 44 on this, and will be as amended. Thank you again, Jamie. Basically, this was discussed at the workshop, and because of the requirements to have something like this done, also the desirability to have it during what's called leaf-off conditions, which we're now heading into after the month of October, it seemed fortuitous to move this a little further along, even though obviously the board has not completed the SEACR process. So this resolution basically is from the town code itself relative to public utilities and towers, and it's just basically taken from that code in terms of the process that would be involved. And one of the things, just to be, two things to be clear, is that by, if you wish, granting this authorization to do the visual assessment, the applicant is aware that this does not mean that you are approving the project. You are still reviewing the project. You are just approving the visual assessment itself. And secondly, is that visual assessments are done using either a crane or a balloon, as cited in our code. They're also done using vantage points. So in other words, if at 99 feet, which is the height of the proposed crane that's going to be on the site, that you would be going through different areas of the town and taking photographs and documenting them so that there is a report, a visual assessment report that follows. It is the responsibility of the applicant to develop the visual assessment areas to submit to this board. So approving this, if you choose, the next step for the applicant would be to engage the services of a visual assessment firm. They would then provide the points, vantage points, and map showing the locations of where they're going to be doing the assessment based upon the height of the crane or balloon. You would then, if you choose, approve that. That would get them on their way to do the assessment sooner rather than later. And so that is basically the gist of what this resolution is about this evening.
Okay, so we have to decide either the balloon or the crane?
Right. The code is not specific in terms of it gives the board a choice of a balloon or a crane. I know we're talking about the limitations sometimes of the balloon with the wind and what have you. You guys are in the crane company business. I'm not sure if it'd be okay. You don't have that kind of crane. Well, you know, again, each one has its limitations. It's, would you like to say something?
I would, if you don't mind. I don't mean to interrupt, Bruce. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to do that. Your code gives them the option, and what I might suggest to you is, I don't know if Insite is going to be monitoring this test or whether they're going to bring in an outside consultant, and what is usually a little more practical is to have them make the recommendation because they're the ones that have to take the photographs, have to analyze the photographs, and have to actually perform the visual analysis. So oftentimes, what happens is the particular visual consultant will put together a proposal, bring it to you for evaluation. So you might want to not lock yourselves in until you see what that consultant's going to offer, unless Jamie's prepared to do that. I'm not sure.
If I remember correctly, I think Jamie said she'd hold on to the end of the balloon, right? And we wouldn't need a crane. At least, that's what I recall. I recall that, so we'll hold it to that. But again, you know, the code is not specific, as John alluded to, and so really would be what would be the most practical, what would be the most visually apparent to people that are going to be doing the study. The balloon, I think Jamie's 3 feet, 4 foot diameter, something of that nature. It would be, it would be at 99 feet, which is the proposed height of the crane, so that this can be assessed, and if the board wishes, they can leave that up to the applicant's consultant in terms of what would be the most applicable, and that's not a problem.
Sure.
I have a question, Bruce. So was this in the code that we have to do this visual inspection?
The answer is no. For the record, Jennifer Gray from Keenan Bean for Morrow Equipment. We would like to take a minute to discuss whether a visual assessment of that type is necessary for this particular application. First, we're not saying that you're not going to see the crane. We acknowledge fully, you will see the crane from certain points, particularly from 84. You will see the crane from certain vantage points on 52, when the crane is in certain positions. We are fully acknowledging that, and because of that, we don't believe that a visual assessment of this kind is really going to give you more information than you already have. We're already acknowledging you will see it. It's our position that a visual assessment, whether it be a balloon test or the test with the crane from the, you know, the various vantage points, is just going to further delay and rack up the costs for the application. Then also, as a separate note, technically for SEACR purposes, the DEC visual, DEC has a visual policy document that guides both DEC and also local agencies as far as how a visual assessment is to be performed and when it should be performed. So DEC has said that views from private properties are not included in the relevant assessment for SEACR purposes. It's only from publicly accessible vantage points, and also vantage points that have been designated as scenic or aesthetic, either by DEC or by the local municipality, you know, or by other governmental agencies. So we're not aware of any vantage points that meet that criteria for this, you know, to study the visual assessment for this crane. We've acknowledged you're going to see it from 84, right? You're going to see it at certain times from 52, but those are not designated scenic or aesthetic publicly, you know, public vantage points. So from a strict analysis under SEACR, we don't think that the type of assessment that's being requested here is warranted. And again, we also don't think it's going to add enough to your knowledge base to warrant the time and the expense of doing this kind of assessment. We are prepared to provide you with an alternative assessment, so we can provide you with either, you've already seen a 3D rendering of the site. We can superimpose the crane in that 3D rendering. We've already submitted section profiles, so you have seen the sightlines from various locations around the property. We may also be able to take currently available imagery of leaf-off conditions specifically from 84. I'm not sure if we have it from 52. We have to check that, but specifically from 84, and provide you with an image that uses that existing photo imagery from 84 in a leaf-off condition and superimpose the crane in that image.
Question. The location that Morrow is at currently...
Yes.
Does it have a crane of this size there?
We have a crane. It's a different model crane. Crane...
You have to go.
And everybody's supposed to be signing in from here. Please.
Yeah, sorry. And also, sorry, could you also sign in as well, please?
Would it like to sign in?
I thought there was a sheet there.
I did. I put a paper and a pen.
Okay. Thank you. To answer your question, we have a yard crane in Millwood, New York. It's a different type of crane. It's a traveling luffing boom crane, which means boom goes up and down.
And what is the height of that?
I have it. It's approximately about 90 feet. Yeah, we have it, because we looked it up for last time. But if you want to see what the crane would look like, we have cranes in White Plains at the, on Hamilton Avenue. Is that the newest one? Yeah, it's, the peak of the crane is at 93 feet, but when the boom is up, it would be 132 feet. But that's what I said, the boom goes up and down. But this crane is a fixed jib crane, so similar to the ones you see in White Plains working, building the Hamilton Avenue Mall down there on Cottis Street.
And the other ones in Millerton?
In Millwood.
Okay.
And near Chappaqua. Yeah. But, and it's not a solid crane like you see the mobile cranes. The boom is made of tubular steel and, you know, has airspace going through and so forth.
Thank you. I think we need something for, if there's a public hearing.
I don't agree with the visual test as well. I feel that the picture will affect the project in a negative way, where more attention will be given to it when, I don't feel that it's necessary because you are obviously going to see this crane. It's the same crane that would go on top. It's a tower crane, obviously, right? The same thing that goes on top of a building. You're going to see this crane from places, and to make them spend money just because, it's not going to affect the outcome of the project to me. It's not going to make a determination whether they should, just because they're going to see this crane in a picture, whether or not want this project here. And if it was a person in the town, I was making them spend money just to spend money, I wouldn't agree with it. So it'd fight for that person to complain about it.
But also, if we have a public hearing and the public says, "What is it going to look like and we have nothing to show them?" I mean, I kind of like Jennifer's idea that she has that 3D rendering.
That's fine.
You know, I think we need to have something to show the public when they come in and they question it, because that area is, you know, a hot topic for people, and they're going to pay attention to what goes in there.
So is it possible to do, basically, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you were offering in terms of visuals, but is it possible to superimpose from a couple of sites and just use a little AI for lack of... And provide some of that?
Not AI, no.
Don't say AI. No, but we do have, we do have the existing topography. We do have models where we can take the actual elevation of the grade that's there now, impose the actual crane with the height of it, and have it be a real scaled model and put into a live picture. So we can take that from a picture from 52. We can take that from a leaf-off condition in, I believe there's November of 2016, which actually had the finished condition. That's the current elevations now on site, so we can, we can superimpose those from 84. That was the last image. But we can provide you with images of what it'll look like without doing a full-on balloon test and that.
We are now experiencing, I think, the first rule of government, which is no good deed goes unpunished. And what we started out with, if you recall, and Jamie was at the workshop, saying we in fact did need more information as to what this may appear. What we suggested is what our code offers, which is a balloon or a crane test. The intent of this evening was to do a good deed and accelerate that process if, so that if they couldn't provide other information, we could at least start that process. I myself, and Bruce has from the beginning, been asking, "What's this going to look like and what's it going to, from where it's going to be seen?" I don't think any of us have any inkling that it's not going to be seen. And so, in point to Mr. Katusi's point, it's up to, it's entirely up to you folks. This resolution, I think, started out as a good deed effort to dovetail with their schedule, and if they want to take the risk of putting together alternative views and trying to satisfy the requirements so that you can go before, and they can go before the public and say, "This is what it's going to look like," that's their risk. And so I would suggest to you, rather than being punished for doing a good deed, you could not entertain this motion, and they run the risk of not being able to satisfy you. And yet again, they may be able to satisfy you. It's a judgment call.
So also, what could happen is they do the, depending what it is, the 3D model that you're talking about, and it comes back here and we say, "No, you know, that's not good enough." Then you will still have to go back and do the visual test, that assessment. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. You've got to be very careful.
No, you don't. Let me do, let me just say something first. I think that the important thing to consider here is that we're all in this room together thinking about this, but the actual testing under the SEACR process is done to provide documentation and information, common sense information to the public. That's what this is about. And so the fact is, is that by having a photo simulation and having that be presented to this board and having photographs in a report, that might provide information to the board, but I will read you what the code says. And again, I realize that this is for wireless communication towers, but there is a structural similarity and a similar height, and therefore potentially a similar impact to this crane, which is not going to be taken up and down. So that basically, the code talks about the fact that the demonstration shall simulate the actual planned height, be demonstrated for a minimum period of eight hours, and include sufficient written notification, a minimum of 14 days prior, to set demonstration for neighboring property owners located within 500 feet of the site by certified mail. In addition, a sign measuring 3 feet by 4 feet shall be posted as a visibly prominent road frontage location on the subject site to notify the general public of the planned demonstration. So the code is basically saying, the folks that are going to be around this property, driving past this property, that are going to see it, they need an opportunity to see what it's going to look like and if it's going to be impactful to them. And that's why it outlines this as a cookbook in terms of how you follow it to make sure the public is fully considered in this process. I don't agree with you that this is not part of SEACR. I think this is absolutely part of a SEACR process, whether or not... Whether or not the board considers an interim step is entirely up to you, but I'm just saying this is what the code represents in terms of providing the public with adequate information to evaluate the proposed impact, if there is an impact. So.
So I would just like to point out, so not trying to poo-poo on any like good deed coming for us. We're just trying to provide an alternative to be able to save a few months in the process because, again, as we mentioned in the past, our whole point of trying to go to the zoning board first is to get a handle on whether the variances will be brought forward first. And that can't be done and completed until SEACRA is completed. So we're trying to do this portion of this as quickly as possible to be able to get through to the zoning board. That being said, I do want to go through just the sections that we had provided previously because there are portions of this that you are going to see the crane, yes. However, they're minimal portions.
I think the board just needs to remember, I'm sorry, the board needs to remember that the zoning board of appeals cannot make any determination on any, any variance that the applicant is requiring or asking for until this board completes the entire SEACRA process and makes a determination of significance. That's why you said what you said earlier this evening, that you cannot present because you don't have sufficient information. So basically, this process has to continue on. We have memos that we wrote. We're hoping the applicant can get them back to us in a timely fashion so we can start the Part II, which will evaluate the impacts and continue the SEACRA process on. So I think that putting this ahead of the game is helping the applicant because they still have the SEACRA process in its entirety to complete.
Understood, completely understand that is what I was going with. But we do, I do just want to go through these sections again because we provided you with vantage points of where the crane in its absolute worst-case scenarios and what you're, what you were essentially going to see. There's a small portion of the boom in, basically where the, where you cross Interstate 84, you know, that you'll be able to see the end of the boom. You're not looking at the top of the crane at 99 feet high because of all the existing vegetation and the topography there. Similarly, down at other portions of 84, you are going to see portions where you will see the top of the crane. There is a good chunk of this portion where the top of the boom crosses the crane tower and you'll see, you'll be able to see the boom. But that's at its absolute worst, furthest part, closest to 84. And then similarly, on the other side toward 52, in its furthest absolute front spot on 52, you will be able to see the boom of the crane, the boom of it, not the top because of the proposed building and how that we've put the crane behind the building. And then again, how the elevations-
Jim, how tall is that building?
The building itself is 40 feet. 40 feet.
40 feet. But if you're driving past and there's a 90-foot piece of equipment behind it-
Yeah, but the road is way below where the building is.
But the road is lower.
No, I know. When you're going past, when you're heading up-
You're looking at 60 feet.
Right, yes. In the, in the section that we have that's furthest north on 52, the grade of 52 is so much further lower than the grade of where the building is that it, the building will block the views of the top part of the crane. In the middle section or where the entrance is, you're going to see-
No, that section is taken directly in front of the building, correctly? Correct? It's not when you're coming up the road at a diagonal, that's coming, you're showing that section through the front face of the building.
The bottom, the bottom section is running straight through the building here. Correct.
So it's not as if, that's what I'm saying, is like if you're coming up 52, it's a different vantage point. No, coming up.
Coming up topography.
Well, I'm going up the hill, like deep grades.
Going up the hill?
Yeah.
Okay. Going, going up the hill, going south. So you're-
East on 52. Thank you. East on 52.
Are we going up the hill or down the hill?
East, yeah. East.
Left or right?
To your right.
Let's do this.
No, 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 no.
This is north.
Well, actually, yeah.
This is north.
It's not, yeah. North is up there.
All of the existing vegetation that's here around the wetlands are basically going to be blocking the majority of your views here. When you're coming back, when you're coming down the hill-
Down the hill is a different story because the grade is different, but I'm talking about coming up the hill.
Are we proposing a power gate in the front of this? Opening and closing in the front of, on the driveway?
There is a, there is a gate.
Is there going to be a gate?
Yes, yes. So what we're proposing is just an alternative to the visual analysis, providing those different views from 52 and from 84 to see if those will satisfy the views that you're looking for.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I think the fact that you're having the discussion you're having highlights one aspect. There's insufficient information with which to evaluate this. Now, we had discussed at the workshop taking the test route. They are suggesting alternatives. Leaf-off is not going to occur in time for the next meeting. It's going to be after the meeting. So as a consequence, what I would suggest is you could actually defer vote on the resolution that's in front of you and allow them to make their alternative representations and submissions and give you time, perhaps by next meeting, to properly evaluate those. And if at that time you don't have the answers that you're looking for this evening or you demonstrate what Giancarlo has already said, we're going to see it. So what? So I guess what I, my suggestion to you would be, as your consultant, is to accept their offer to provide alternatives, defer vote until next meeting and wait and see what develops.
And the one, I would like to know also if you all have an estimate of what kind of timing it takes to do the balloon test and what the cost might be, just so we can understand the level of ask in this process.
Well, like she said, the DEC is time of year. It could be next, it could be next July. I don't, we don't know when the DEC is going to say that test could be performed, right? Isn't that what Jamie was saying earlier? The DEC has got a say?
No.
No. It's going to be-
That's independent.
I thought there was a window and then-
No, Jane, what you want to try to do is the test is ideally done when the leaves are off the trees.
Okay.
Number one. Number two, if the planning board authorizes the test to be done through your resolution and your vote, then that would click the process into being that I just read to you, that the applicant would provide notification to the property owners. They'd make a sign and put it out in front of the property and then they would basically wait till opportune times. There's also weather considerations in terms of a minimum amount of wind and, so they have a couple of alternate dates oftentimes, you know? But it wouldn't be waiting till then. It would be waiting till, you know, the end of, when the leaves coming off, the end of October, beginning of November, or something like that, in that range. Okay? If the board searches.
Okay.
Yeah, Ron Yacon again. I just want to say, we spent a lot of time and money doing all these views, showing-
Sorry, can you speak a little bit?
Yeah. We spent a lot of time and money preparing all these views, showing where the crane would be and what you could possibly see. Honestly, I don't understand what someone coming, making some photos is going to show you any more than what you have here. The crane is the crane and it's going to travel back and forth. Worst, we showed you the worst-case scenario, not the best case, and I really don't know what you guys are asking, ladies are asking for. What are we to do?
If we have a public hearing-
Yes.
And the residents come out-
Right.
Because I think they might. We want to show that we did our due diligence and that they can see pictures other than that. I'm sorry, they're, they're going to want to see photos.
So you want photos.
The superimposed photos would definitely help the process here. I know exactly what this is going to look like. I'm experienced with this. I can see exactly what this is going to look like and that's why I feel strongly about it. But to you guys that might have any kind of questions, I think maybe a photograph will help and this could, you know, go a long way to just put the photos in.
Okay.
And then take it from there. I'm more than happy to defer this until next month.
So why don't you, if the board feels it's appropriate, why don't you have the applicant provide as much information as they possibly can to you pursuant to whatever you think is appropriate? Have a look at it. I think the critical thing though to remember is, as you're looking at it, again, and just to reiterate, and I think Kathy keeps bringing up the same point I have, is that this is as much for the public to know about as, as this board and the people in this room and whoever might be watching. And the fact is, is that when you have the balloon or crane test, it's purposeful so that people can actually drive by it, see it, see it from their, from their deck or from their backyard or from wherever they might be as a vantage point to see if it impacts them or not. And that is something that is the reason why this exercise is undertaken. I hear your point in terms of, you know, we're going to see it. We all get that. But, but what is the magnitude? What is the impact? And quite frankly, if our impacts identified, how are they mitigated? Can they be mitigated? And that again is part of the SEACRA process. Okay? So the board can decide, if you wish, to defer vote on this resolution this evening, have the applicant come back, give you the materials by the due date of the next meeting in October, and we'll have another look at it if you feel that's appropriate. Or you can vote this evening one way or the other.
So do we have to-
I think Jamie should tell us which way they want us to go.
She doesn't tell us which way.
Jamie, could you, could you email Vera?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. She doesn't tell us.
Jamie, could you email Vera with the location of the two cranes that were mentioned? Because for me, it would help to go do a drive-by.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Since you have the other two cranes in different places, like Millbrook and you said White Plains?
White Plains, yeah. The White Plains is similar to this crane.
Correct. You said it's similar to this. It'll, it'll give you a visit, it'll give people visualization of what you could do in that regard so they can actually see it picture-wise besides the 3D imposed picture. That could give people an idea. That's all I would ask.
It would be helpful to me.
Yeah, I just-
Personally, if we were going with a, an alternate option, if we're done with an alternate option, I would like to see what you were saying about the 3D because it actually takes into account the topography of the site that we're dealing with. You go down to White Plains and look at a tower crane, it's, oh yeah, there's a tower crane in the middle of White Plains. It's not going to give you what this is going to show. So if we are going to do an alternate, me personally, I'd rather do the model and have a look at it.
Yeah, no, to me it's an and, not an or.
Yeah, because I don't think going down to, looking at a tower crane, because I see enough tower cranes in the city and that haven't done.
Yeah.
You can't see it from where you're working out.
No, in the tunnel, can't see too many.
Yes. That was, that was it.
I just want to remind the board too. One of the things that they, they need to do is ultimately go to the ZBA, either for a clarification or a variance in terms of the height. I cannot imagine, having met some of your ZBA members, that the appearance of this crane and what it's going to look like is not going to be part of their deliberations. So I don't think what we're doing here is adverse to that. As a matter of fact, anything you do to improve the information available to the ZBA makes their case better, I would submit. But that's, that's neither here nor there. I just, it's, it's a duplicative effort because-
And I think, you know, for mere mortals, these elevations are great, but for mere mortals, it's hard to translate that into what we would be seeing. I understand you pros can do that, but.
Understood, yes.
All right. So then I think that the action of the board this evening again is to defer review, further review and, and decision on the resolution. Have the applicant provide additional information in the form of photographs or other materials, topographic information that would prove more informative than what you have now. Come back for the next meeting, have a look at it and either define that as satisfactory in terms of you making a decision moving forward or that you would move forward with the visual test during leaf-off conditions. Is that basically where we are right now?
That's basically, yeah.
All good? All understand? Great.
Agree on that?
Yep.
Okay. So that basically was the action that was informed by the board this evening was adoption of the resolution for the visual exam, visual test, which we had talked about at the workshop. You're holding that in abeyance. So basically the memos are going out. The applicant will please provide a return by the due date of the October meeting. Our next step that John and I will work on is developing the Part II EAF based upon the additional information provided by the applicant pursuant to our memos. You are lead agency now and you're holding an abeyance and a determination until the application is complete. So that's basically where you are this evening. Okay?
Okay.
Anything else, Jamie?
With the copies of the two memos from the DEP and the DOT that came through for SEACRA, we did not receive them.
No, okay, I think I can forward them.
That would be great.
Sure.
And then I just would like to confirm the date of the submission for this because I believe the schedule says the 26th and I just want to make sure that's real.
It would be September 26th, yes.
Okay.
And the chairman has been relatively rigid, so September 26th by 12 noon or it is not considered any.
Okay.
Yes.
That's not a phone call, that's 12 o'clock, saying we're on our way.
Understood.
We can't, we can't do the Part II unless you get this up there.
Right, we need the information, yeah.
Yes, if it's not in by the deadline, it's not going to be done.
Understood.
But that's for everybody, that's what I'm saying. It's not-
Understood. Is there anything else? Anything else? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Onto signs.
We're going on to Wells Fargo.
So sign number one is Wells Fargo on Route 52. They had submitted initially an application for some signs. Mr. Walters and I reviewed it. It was found that they were not in compliance with the zoning regulations. They were given the option to either reduce the number and size of the signs to be compliant with zoning or to go to zoning. They chose the first option. Mr. Walters and I reviewed the signs that they submitted most recently. They were found to be in compliant with zoning. And in addition, the base of the sign is required to be stone or a certain similar material and our code, they provided that information as well. Mr. Walters now indicated, and I agree, this is considered de minimis for the planning board's consideration. You basically just have to vote it is de minimis and authorize Mr. Walters to issue the building permit.
Do we have a motion or just?
Motion is, yeah, you're fine.
Just a motion. All right, I want to make a motion that the tax ID property 44.5-2-24, Wells Fargo Bank sign, that it goes, is going to be classed as de minimis.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next two are basically the same. Mr. Chairman, La Catrina Taco on 531 Route 52 and also OW Realty, which is Prestige Petroleum, also on Route 52. Both of these organizations are just going to be replacing existing signs. They are non-conforming signs, but they're not changing the non-conformity. They're just replacing the signs that are presently there. Mr. Walters wrote a memo to the planning board for both of these indicating in his opinion they should be handled as de minimis applications. I agree, so the board may vote first on La Catrina Tacos, authorizing Mr. Walters to issue a building permit as it's a de minimis application, and then also OW Realty as well.
Oh, okay. So we'll start with, make a motion for the La Catrina Taco sign application and tax ID 33.48-1-6 for, to move this to de minimis since the sign is within the code.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let me get to the next one. Okay, we'd like to make a motion for OW Realty slash Prestige Petroleum sign application for tax ID 44 period two, sorry, .5-2-23 for a de minimis sign. That's de minimis sign also, right?
Right, correct.
Okay. Would like to make that motion?
I'm motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're on to Metric Motors.
We've seen this before. Mr. Iaruzo's here and Bruce had comments a while ago that I addressed in a memo dated August 20th. August 20th. We also submitted to the board an email from Bill Schilling, attorney for Mr. Iaruzo, which is telling you that he is not pursuing any extension of the building at this time forever. He can explain that more succinctly a little bit later. We were here because Bill Walters issued a violation, and the violation required that we submit a site plan. We've submitted a site plan. Tried to address Bruce's comments. And I submitted to the board a document from the state DOT regarding the millings and what millings can and cannot be used for. And no, that got submitted earlier this week or late last week. And that's just, we want, I mean, they'll put it, give us a violation. We created a site plan. We wanted to legalize what work was done there. I mean, two or three inches of millings was placed over some areas where there were parking vehicles on dirt and to stabilize that area. We're looking for the board to approve the site plan so that Mr. Iaruzo can be done with this.
I think that the endeavor here is to just get some clarity in terms of the potential wetland issues that have been discussed throughout this project since we've had the application. I'm going to talk about material because that's what is defined in our code and not specific to wetlands. And our town code, Chapter 39A, which is the Freshwater Wetlands Code, does not permit material to be dumped or deposited into a wetland or a wetland 100-foot setback without a permit. Secondly, the town code does not permit any pollutant introduction into a wetland or wetland buffer without a permit. So Mr. Correll had a wetland consultant of their own go out and have a look at the wetlands, and he did some flagging out there. But one thing that did not come up is the potential soils on the site. And Mr. Correll provided a soils map to us from the National Resource Conservation Service, NRCS, which shows that throughout the majority of the site, certainly the middle and the southern portion of the site, there is a certain type of soil called lycister soil, which is in our town code, again, Chapter 39A of the Town of Kent, is identified as a wetland soil. So we have a map that's provided by the applicant indicating that a majority or substantial amount of the site is potentially in wetland soils. Now, the maps themselves, when they're constructed, are not specific to a site. They are general planning tools. They are oftentimes highly accurate, but they cannot be depended upon to definitively determine where a wetland is or is not on any specific piece of property. So in those circumstances, what we have done in the past, this board has done several times in the past, is have a qualified soil scientist, either a registered soil scientist or a certified soil scientist, go out and investigate the soils to determine if the maps are accurate, and they are indeed wetlands or they are not. And they are not wetlands. So that's what we've been suggesting all along, because some of the material that's been deposited on the site, as demonstrated by the applicant's engineer, we provided a sketch showing the, I believe, the locations of the material on the site. They are overlaying an area that is shown on the NRCS maps as being lycister soils, meaning it's possible that the material that was installed by the applicant, that is the source of the violation, is overlaying wetlands. But we do not know that for sure until it's proven out on the site by a certified wetland soil scientist. So that's where we are right now. I went and looked at some Google Earth maps, and, you know, although the applicant's engineer is professing, all this stuff happened about 20 years ago, the Google Earth maps show that a lot of modifications to the site were occurring from, let's say, 2019 to the present, 2022 and beyond. So I think basically what we have is an opportunity to continue this same process and continue the same recommendation, and that is have a soil scientist provide a testing protocol to this board as to where they feel tests should be done. The test basically is done by a cookbook methodology in the Army Corps of Engineers 1987 manual called an atypical situation, where you're basically going through the fill that's been deposited and examining the soils underneath to see what you have, and if they're hydroic or wetland soils or not. And that's the process that needs to be done because the material that's there now was deposited, if indeed, in a wetland or wetland buffer. It was done without a permit, and it needs to be removed or mitigated at some point. And because it's millings, millings are asphalt products, they have potential VOCs and other pollutants that could get into the wetlands and cause pollutant loading into the wetlands, which also is a violation. So I think that, you know, again, I'm just kind of regurgitating what we've already talked about, but I just want, and I can share the aerials and everything I got with the applicant. I'm happy to do that at the direction of the board, just so we can kind of make sure we come together on the process and procedure here to move this forward. And basically would be to engage the services of a soil scientist, examine the materials, come up with a testing protocol. The soil scientist would be approved by this board. The protocol would be approved by this board, and if so doing, then they'll go out, do their testing, and then we figure out what needs to be done from there. That's basically where we are. Now, the thing that also the board needs to keep in mind is that if there's a wetland permit required for an action in the town, the town code indicates automatically you need an erosion sediment control permit as well to be granted, and that's something that John's going to talk to now. Okay? Do you have any questions?
So I do have an updated memo, and basically, just for the board's identification and Mr. Correll's, it's really a reprint of our August 1st, 2024 memo, which was discussed at the workshop. Because to Bruce's point, the determination of the board is, before you made any decision as to whether the millings were going to be removed, reordered, whatever, we needed to put together, put to bed the issue of the wetlands under our wetland ordinance. I prepared my memo with that in mind. In other words, once the board made it, had enough information to make a determination on the wetlands, you would direct the applicant what to do. Now, it was somewhat mischaracterized in Jack's response that I was dealing with the to-be-built building. In point of fact, my memo actually says, we're not going to even talk about that because the citation from Mr. Walters clearly said disregard anything with a future addition until the order of remedy is solved. It doesn't even come into discussion. So to that end, the other thing here is, and I tried to prepare Mr. Correll and the applicant, this planning board in past circumstances has required the removal of millings from any property in Kent, and particularly not for use in wetlands or wetland buffers. So in the event this is determined to be a wetland or a wetland buffer, the standard custom and practice has been to remove the millings. And Mr. Walters, Mr. Correll submitted some additional information today regarding about the use of millings and where they can be done. Got it, got it late today, but standard custom and practice, and it has been echoed by DEP in several circumstances, millings within the wetland or wetland buffer are to be removed. So until we get that matter resolved, we recommend doing nothing but my letter, in the event that we have to do something, that what we're going to need going forward is outlined in my letter, even though Mr. Correll knows it, he's prepared enough erosion and sediment control plans, and that's basically what my memo says.
We did have Ted Kozlowski flag the wetlands, and Ted Kozlowski is a reputable wetlands consultant. He's the wetlands consultant for the Town of Patterson, and my plan reflects the flagging of the wetlands and the 100-foot setback, and the millings are not within the wetland or the wetland buffer. I mean, what, I think Bruce was talking about the lawn out there that was filled in 1960 that may have been wetlands in 1960, but it's not there now.
So I'm not refuting anything with respect to their applicant's wetland either. All I'm just saying is that based upon my review, and I have the materials with me now, and I shared this with the board at the workshop, you can clearly see that the soils are mapped as what are constituted as town wetland soils through the middle third and bottom third of the site. And you can also clearly see that the site has had modifications from 2019. That's 2019, Jack. And there's 2022. Okay. Well, hold on, let me finish up, okay? Then you can go. And so, you know, I think what happened, what we need to find out, and if Mr. Kozlowski wants to opine on the materials I provided to the applicant, that's great. It's just that we have an unsolved situation here, where we have a map that says that we have wetland soils on the site. We have a town code that says that the map soils are wetland soils, and we have somebody who I don't believe has considered that in a delineation. They did some, found the water course out there and a few other things. But basically, you know, this is something that's not new to this board. There's been several occasions where we've had a situation where we had a map soil condition. We had a soil scientist go out and have a look at it, and in both cases, there were wetlands that were found in that exploration. That may or may not happen here, but until such time as you do that, you just don't know. And so that's the point that I'm making, and, you know, this is an exercise that has to happen because, you know, there was material brought in without a permit, and therefore this exercise has to be undertaken to determine what the impacts are, if there are wetland impacts or not. And it's kind of a cart before the horse, because if there are not wetlands out there and the map is not accurate, well, then it's dealt with with one way, okay? But if there are wetlands out there, then the board may consider dealing with this material on the site a different way. So it really hinges upon this determination, and we've been talking about this for several times. And I know Mr. Correll is saying, well, their applicant's wetland consultant didn't find anything in the wetland or wetland buffer. Again, that's because I don't believe he had a look at these soils and this code information that would have at least had a mention in his report, okay, or something to the effect that he acknowledged this and that he found it to be not correct, or whatever the case might be. But the only way of determining is, again, through the Army Corps of Engineers, atypical situations. It's a very defined way of determining if it's wetland or not underneath some fill materials. So that's where we're at.
So if he gets rid of the fill, or gets rid of the millings, right, and then tests the soil, this will be done?
Well, what they're saying is that they dig down and find out the soil. If it turns out not to be wetlands, we deal with it one way. But if it turns out to be wetlands, we have to deal with it a completely different way.
Okay, so then you might, so if there was nothing underneath there, no wetlands, the millings could stay?
Well, so the thing is, is that the wetlands, if they're not wetlands, Kathy, the millings could stay, but in accordance to the research that both John and I have done, the millings cannot stay exposed. They have to be covered and mitigated, and also it has to be demonstrated that they're not going to contaminate the groundwater. And that was actually in the material that Jack provided to us earlier in the week. So that would be something that we'd have to look at. So, again, it boils down to getting somebody out there that's a soil scientist, that the board approves with a plan that you approve, and just finding this out.
I had a question. Bruce, can you walk us through Jack's map here? In your terms of what's going on here with these highlighted sections on this map that's on the board?
Was it the pink?
The pink, the blue, the most area that's in question that could be impeded in wetlands?
This area, you hear, Jim Carlo? This is the area that's the millings.
Okay.
The circular area right here. So here's, here's Loganville, right? If you have to drive, here's the building. There's parking around it here. This is the area of the millings. Also, this is a second system area. There also appears to be over in this area a little bit of land disturbance.
Can I interrupt for a second? I thought, according to what I'm looking here, it's not that circle thing. The millings go into the next door and around. Yeah, it goes like that, yeah. According to this, it goes into, over the property line as well into next door. I don't know what that other one is.
But what you're saying is that it's actually, I kind of looked at that, too, Simon, as they be this line.
Yeah, that looks more like what it calls, it calls out millings on that.
So let's say that circular one, it's labeled with millings, is incorrect.
Yeah, because over here it also says millings.
Yeah, I know it's.
Yeah, I will darken the millings. And is Paul Janik an acceptable soil scientist for you to recommend to the board?
What Jack is asking, Paul Janik has done work in the town on behalf on these soil science issues. He's a geologist and professional wetland scientist, soil scientist in Connecticut. As we now know, Connecticut uses soil sciences to figure out where wetlands come from and where they are. So he has done work in the town. I can't recommend anybody yet, as you know, but he has done work in the town in the past in certain lower circumstances.
Well, how do I, how do I get the board? You said the board has to accept.
Shall we, can we ask, should we ask, can we ask if anybody has any objections, or you can't?
Sure. You can basically say that the applicant is for it, the individual is conducting this work. Is there any objections to the conduct of the board, any wetland?
Who is it?
Paul Janik.
Paul Janik. I can provide the board with a resume or his curriculum vitae.
Curriculum vitae.
Okay, sorry. But one more, one more thing about.
This is property that, sorry, owns.
Yeah, sorry, can I just ask a question? Why is there a property land running through the middle? Is it two lots or, or I'm missing something? There's meats and bonds running through the middle?
It is one property.
Oh, okay, it's just normally you don't, if it's all one, you don't need that. No, no, you see the meats and bonds you have just there in the middle? Yeah, yeah, then if it's all one piece, you don't need the meats and bonds, right?
It is one piece.
And we'll take that one out. And we'll get this information for you, for Paul Janik, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, but just to be clear, if the board agrees, that person would be satisfactory. And that stuff would be for Mr. Janik to submit a testing plan showing where he's on behalf.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, of course. Yes, of course.
And the alternative to not having him would be somebody else from our state? How would that work?
Uh, no.
What would be like the next course of action if we didn't agree with that?
The state, the state would not, would that involve Mr. Janik Carlo?
No, you just mean somebody from New York, rather than Connecticut.
From New York State, you could, the interesting thing about New York State is that because wetlands are more focused on plants rather than soils and weapon determinations in New York State, basically, we see a lot of soil scientists in Connecticut. Because in Connecticut, they use soil scientists to figure out where the wetlands are, so they're very experienced in looking at soils. In New York State, we really don't have too many soil scientists that do that. You can certainly search around and find somebody. I think, I think Mr. Janik has been restoring something to it.
I used him on another job. I don't know exactly where he works at, but he is definitely in Connecticut.
So do we, where do we get, or we can say something now, or?
If you feel that Mr. Janik would be appropriate.
I don't, that's what I'm saying, I'm not aware of him, so.
Then have Jack submit his resume to you for your view at the next meeting. Also, if you want to kind of, put a plan together for this board.
Yeah.
That would be good. That'd be good.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You okay with that?
I got the next one.
Do you want to say anything?
We're good?
Don't, don't worry, do you want to?
I'm just grateful that this all happened so that I do not do any, 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 I'm very grateful to you.
Well. No, I'm just, the only thing is that you brought millings in without a permit as well. No, it's okay, but you can go up to the mic and just introduce yourself.
And sign your name in.
My name is Greg Iaruzo.
Yeah, all I'm saying is that, you know, if you had went, you know, through the proper course and got a permit to bring in stuff, we wouldn't be in this situation, so, unfortunately. But we are, and we have to take appropriate actions.
You know, I understand, I'm all about law and order, but, you know, there is a dividing point where. point where it becomes harsh.
No, you're not the only one that has brought it in without a permit. We have had to make them do, you know, follow procedure, so we can't, you know, we have to, we have to make everybody do, follow the same procedures.
I'm not building, and you've given me a gift.
All I was asking, are you comfortable with the direction we're going to go with the resume of this guy and moving forward?
I'll be comfortable when this is all over, and I don't have to be in this room again.
Okay.
That's fine. Okay. So we're below the line now, right?
Yep.
Well, next, next one is Nunziata.
No.
It's not only.
We're below the line now. You, you got, what agenda do you have?
That's what I have. One of the line.
Unless I got the wrong agenda.
No, we're in the line.
We're below the line now.
But we've submitted, you know, we've been here before, and I have documents from the town highway superintendent and indicating, I can read it to you. Do you have it?
Hold on. I don't know, we're below the line, so go ahead.
It's up to you, to be blunt, nothing made.
Nothing came in.
Didn't come in on the deadline. All right, so now.
Number two, I have no verification from Vera that the administrative matters that were identified have been resolved. I don't know whether the escrow has been changed from Nunziata to this gentleman. I have no verification that the bonds have been changed from Nunziata to this gentleman. There were administrative matters, so.
Well, not even that. We, we've already just said to Jamie today, if you do not get the stuff in on time, we can't entertain it, so.
And to be blunt, highway superintendent memo reached my desk via email at about four fifteen this afternoon. So I have any chance to open.
Okay, so we're sticking below the line.
Right, at workshop, we said it was going below the line.
So we're done, but?
We'll put you on for next month.
Okay.
Who's having the fun now? Below the line? Westfall Properties.
I'm sorry, I don't mean, I didn't mean to, to be, to speak.
No, it's okay.
No, we can't, you can't make exceptions. Everybody, you have to be in by deadline and that's it anymore, and we're not.
And point of fact, Vera has been trying to get these administrative matters reviewed. I don't know whether she did or not. If she was here, she'd be able to opine, but she's not. So below the line, Westfall. We have a submittal. It came in after the deadline. Westfall will be on the October meeting for consideration. A cursory review suggests that they're short one deed, but other than that, it's probably in a position where you could entertain a resolution. But again, it's up to you folks next month.
They can get that deed by?
Yes.
September twenty-sixth?
Yep, and I'll, I'll send an email to Jack. Nunziata, we just spoke about. It will assume that these were all official submittals. They're in before the twenty-sixth. Provided the administrative matters are resolved, we'll put that on tentatively for discussion at October.
Okay.
And it looks like most of the issues are resolved, so we might be able to move that ahead as well. Bliss Day Spa, that's another de minimis letter. Unfortunately, the paperwork just came in today, and Mr. Walters is pursuing on an alternate route some issues in court, so you might want to see how that shakes out before you do anything there. Flint Lot Storage, I completed, I did, I performed a completeness review. They have a complete memo. We're waiting for a resubmittal with all the issues resolved. We're waiting for them. AJ First Realty, the Nail Spa, I don't think we've seen anything on that.
No, I think it did, but it was again late.
Okay. Alper, we haven't seen anything. Beardwood, again, they made a submission, but this was one of those submissions that they called at twelve oh one and said, we're on our way. And Vera said, well, that's, that's okay, but I'm going, so you're not on time. So they're on for October. Guy Lazaka Mayet, that's kind of disappeared. Nichols Road has disappeared. Route fifty-two has disappeared. Repoli has disappeared. Ryder, we keep getting conflicting reports. There was some effort to make a submission for the October, for this meeting. Apparently they didn't make it. We may well expect one in, in October. I do not know, but that's a question for Vera when she returns. Torres, we don't have anything. TJ Contracting, I know Vera was going to reach out to him and see if he was still interested in moving forward.
I think he is.
But, is he?
I think he is, yes.
Okay, so we're waiting for stuff from him, and Gypsy Trail has disappeared completely. And, and I just want to revisit something just, just for a quick second. Back to the Crane. The resolution, if you may recall, was almost directly asked for by Jamie for the applicants to keep this moving.
Right.
We were content with identifying the need for additional information and allowing them, as John Carlos said, everybody knows we're going to see this, well, do a better job of demonstrating that. And she didn't want to lose the time. So that's why I said it was an exercise in no good deed goes unpunished, and, and to be blunt, I think Bruce and I feel somewhat punished because we did what we were asked to do by the applicant. And that's all I want to say. And I just feel a need to be on the record.
Nope, that's good. Anybody else got anything? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to draw this meeting to a conclusion and close it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.